This time we'll call the Tuesday, March twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the voice supervisors to order. Larry, David, Mike Stain, this is myself, Jack, who are your supervisors? Lisa Smith and Bjorn from the auditor's office and the one Goki from the supervisor's office. And the first item on our agenda this morning is not Dave Driver, but it is Mike. Morning.
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 First thing I have is we took quotes for payment markings again. And we had three quotes and can mine was low at one oh six nine oh nine twenty-seven. And ask the board to approve can mine highway markings. Or being our roads.
Do we, I mean, we pretty much mark the same rows every year, right? They don't come out with a better product.
There's a more expensive product that you can put on, but it wears out. I mean, it costs you like, say, it costs you three times.
Yeah.
It lasts three times as long, so.
So we're in the same bucket.
You're in the same bucket, yeah, pretty much.
Unless the price goes up to.
The only thing that would would help is if you would would actually mill in the the center lines. Payment markings, they do that sometimes, just mill just a little bit into the road. So the payment markings don't get plowed, the plows don't scrape on them, the traffic doesn't wear on. But it is.
Do you remember the the writing that was on the highway between Lamont and Zwingo? You couldn't get rid of. It was there forever. It might still be there.
What the hell did he use?
We all used to talk about that.
Is this about the same or what kind of percentage will we go up to, you know, or?
They told me it was gonna go up about forty percent. I don't know that. I think this last last year was five dollars and sixty cents of a station. This is five eighty-two.
Did you say forty percent or four?
Forty percent is what they told me. That's what our steel went up when we bought our culverts. It was up about forty percent. And we're ordering some piling and stuff, and it looks like that's gonna be up about forty percent. Yeah. And so we we paid a hundred percent of our center line. And then just a percentage, about a third of our white lines, actually reduced it because I knew the prices were gonna be up, so I reduced it because we we didn't increase the amount in the budget enough to to cover the the increase.
I mean, you actually look at them and see what needs them or just?
I I keep a track of which roads I paint the edge line on and I rotate them.
Yeah.
And the the center line, like like you say, we paint center line on everything here.
We need them lines keeps my car in between.
Yeah.
Auto driving.
So so this is just about a third of the way, the edge line.
I see.
Something something they did over near the recess reflectors on the center lines. And I mean, at night, you can see through the mountain roads. It's just like the lighted highway. That is really nice, but they have a lot more money.
Aaron, that was my motion to accept the bid from down line for the markings. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi, motion, Karen.
Okay, the next thing I have is random cracks ceiling. With the five different asphalt roads, having a crack seal for a while and came up with our totals and then Manats Incorporated is low at sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Gliesner was real close at sixty-two thousand, nine two ninety. Thousand and nine hundred dollars difference.
Yep.
We've asked the board to approve the nets.
Make a motion to approve. I would second the motion in a second to approve minutes. And then all those in favor?
Alright.
I motion here about the normal amount of miles per unit too, we do.
Miles, if we're actually doing more this year than we did last year, but we had more money last year.
No, how many cracks per mile, right?
And we actually go out and measure them, so.
Yeah.
We have we all. Um, that's all I have, I guess, once board has some question.
I don't know if they brought it up to Dave or not. On bridge decks, so we're doing the concrete decks now, we're using, still using five IDs. For the. For to support.
Support the deck.
Yeah. Can we increase the deck thickness and eliminate beams? I mean, like the slab bridge, I think that's what they're doing on here from Walmart to South Main Street Bridge.
The South Main Street Bridge has concrete beams on it.
Okay.
We do build bridges that are where the deck thicknesses holds a bridge up that are usually about twenty to twenty-four inches thick. So it takes a lot of concrete.
I was just wondering if that balances with the ID going up that high, or if we can do the concrete ID, they'd be cheaper than the steel ones.
They'd be more expensive, plus they're harder to get right now.
Form in place.
What's that?
Any form in place?
No, those have to be pre-tensioned. They have to be formed. And then they they stretch the cables and when they release the cables, the beam, the center of the beam goes up. Those are.
Okay.
Pre-tensioned.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
I've had a couple good reports if you wanna hear them. No, most of the good things about the gravel roads.
I do.
A few few boils coming up, and I suppose we'll get a few more, but I see they're putting some gravel on, so they expect to snow it down, I take it.
Yeah.
And then there's getting extraters out there working, so yeah.
I think everybody thinks.
I've heard a couple of good comments.
Thank you.
Well, we have a few minutes. Do you wanna come up?
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll start with the schedule for this week. At eleven o'clock today, there is a National Workforce Board presentation by Zoom for Jack. And at noon today is a TIF training that Mike is participating in, and that's also by Zoom. Six o'clock tonight is the Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting in the committee room downstairs. It's for Jack. And at seven o'clock is the Jackson County Board of Health meeting in the conference room downstairs. Wednesday, March twenty-third at nine AM is an iris meeting, I'll interview go by Zoom for Larry. At one o'clock is an early childhood Iowa site visit, and I think that is it's just the new with the Sacred Heart one. She changed a couple of them around yesterday for Jack. And another one at two o'clock for Cardinal School for Jack. At four o'clock is the ECIA Executive and Council Meetings Interview for Jack. Thursday, March twenty-fourth at nine AM is an RPA meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Jack and Larry. At eleven o'clock is the Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa Meeting Interview for Jack. At two oh five, we have a special board meeting to open the bids on the fair and extension building. And that's either in person in here or by Zoom. Also, at noon that day is a Mental Health and Disability Services Stakeholders Meeting in Hurstville. For any of you that want to attend that. Friday, March twenty-fifth at seven AM is a McCopey Leadership Team Meeting for Larry. And at nine forty-five that morning is an Isaacs, um, kill, first full kills update on that project by Zoom also for Jack. Monday, March twenty-eight at four PM is an early childhood Iowa Council Meeting in Dewitt for Jack. And at five PM is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Board Meeting by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-ninth at nine AM.
This, I think this might be new, but the, so the Board of Health meeting tonight is now in Zoom, they're correcting. I see she sent an email out, so if you wanna attend that or listen in. I sure can attend. It's interesting. On the new tape.
You can pick it up if the lines isn't good. So. Okay, um, my business this morning is mostly to do with appointments, since I finally have some room on the agenda. The first thing I'm looking for is a motion to accept the resignation of Frank Freebird from the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission after six years.
I would move to approve with, uh, thank you, we thank you to Frank for his time spent and time served, so. Appreciate it. Get people to, it's hard to get people to serve.
Yes.
Pretty good, Ron.
Yes.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve the resignation of Frank Freebird, all those in favor? I I motion, Carrie.
I'm the next looking for a motion to appoint Anne Bernard Hough to take Frank's place on the historic preservation commission. That's a three-year appointment expiring December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve. Second, motion and a second to approve Anne Bernard Hough being appointed to the historic preservation commission for a three-year term. All those in favor? I I motion, Carrie.
We also had one opening left on the eminent domain commission. And Randy Coolman has applied for that opening in the category of bankers and property managers or precursors. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint him to the eminent domain board for two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll move second. Then moved and seconded to appoint Randy. Coleman to the eminent domain committee, all those in favor? Hi, I motion, Carrie.
Is is that more of a business person type thing?
Yeah.
He was, yeah.
I think he owns Coolman.
Angers Realtors, property managers.
Several different categories.
Right. I'm also looking for motion to reappoint three people to the historic preservation commission for three-year terms. And then it's Jacob Boulard, Dan Holm, and Joyce Rains.
Motion to approve. Need both said yes, correct?
They have.
The second.
That's good. We have a motion in a second to appoint Jacob Boulard, Dan Holm, and Joyce Rains to the Historic Preservation Commission for three-year terms. All those in favor? I I motion, Carrie.
So I have you.
Thank you. Well, Marty isn't here yet.
I told him nine twenty.
Okay. So do you wanna do any of your stuff, or should we just wait and recess till nine?
More than happy to to do part of mine. Yeah, I can do that. So this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. An authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Move to approve. Second, motion in a second to approve the publication of the minutes. All those in favor?
Alright.
Motion, Carrie. At this time, we'll be joined by Marty Hoodling.
Morning.
Morning.
Just a few things we're working on that I I have got done in the the jail. We put a new shower valve in I believe it's cell forty-one. Worked on the valve for the the sink. Uh, we replaced the panic button in cell forty-one. Uh, replaced several plate bolts for security back in the cell area. Uh, the hot water heater, I put two new heating elements in it because we were, one was burnt and I just replaced both of them because it's been a while. Replaced a door handle on the door that goes from like the hallway into the cell area. At one time it was taken off back in the day. I don't quite know why, but I remember taking it off. Um, the grounds around here push snow and sand the parking lot. And I did the parking lot out at the interpretive center, they called, and I put some salt and sand out there. I got my new lawnmower finally. And I think I'm like it just as much as I do the truck jack.
That's great.
It's nice.
We wanna keep you blind.
And I appreciate it. But I I the first day I you I just used on that little snow and I got out, got using it, I could smell antifreeze. So I pulled it back in the shed and the heater hoses that go up to the heater. I don't know if the clamps were the wrong size or what, but it was leaking antifreeze bad, so I replaced. Thank thank God secondary roads was there, so I went down, got three hose clamp from them and replaced them, and then the weights on the back, they were bolted together, but they slide back forth, so I just put a couple of bolts down alongside it. Got that taken care of.
So.
Our brand new lawnmower, and you had to do that to it?
Well, the I can I can understand that some of these things happen, but do you avoid the warranty if you do that yourself?
I wouldn't think so.
You should, did you call them and tell them at the lake?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Doc admitted that.
Yeah. I got it on the or on the email.
That's good.
Okay. Um, I apparently sometime during the winter on the back of the snow sand and salt spreader, there's these flaps that you can adjust. I lost one and I couldn't find it, so ordered new one. So now the snow's gone, I've been looking for it, because usually you can find it, but I haven't found it as yet. Hopefully I will, because of like a hundred and twenty dollars for a little piece of tin like that, stainless steel. The senior citizen, I worked on the toilets, they're, I don't know, they just, it seemed like there's a problem with the toilets down there all the time. They bust the handle off. I I don't quite know why, but that's what it is. Changed several lights, bulbs, and ballasts down there. Here in the courthouse, I the hinge on the swinging door into the assessor's office broke. We took it off, got new ones here, then they decided they didn't want the swinging door, so I took it off. For the kit, the cable people, uh, they needed a hole in the what I'm gonna call the magistrate's office, so I made a hole down through the floor so they could run a conduit down through there to make pulling the wires a lot easier, kinda like we did out here in the hallway, the max has holes. When they get done and are done, I'll make lids and doors and cover them up with something. The kiosk, we had to take it apart to get the wire down through there because it went down and then over. Not everything, but when we put it back together, we made it so the panel can come off if we ever have to do it again. So we don't wanna tear the floor up and everything like we did this time. The ice maker from the hospital that we got, I have it ready to be hooked to the water and the drain in the lounge, but I'm gonna have the plumber make the actual pipes and stuff, so it doesn't leak, and if it does, it's his fault, not mine. I did have Kellman Birch make a tray and put underneath it, so if something does leak or something, it will be caught hopefully by then. What's that?
There will be a shut-off close second, right?
Yeah, it's under the sink.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The care facility, I finally finished up bracing the shed, took all the cables down. I still gotta put the boards back on the walls where the cables went through the walls, but it's, I think it's there to stay.
Did we also apply wood on the inside of that to stable that?
Not yet, no. We're, I don't know if we, the way I got a brace, I don't know if you'll ever need that, but if you want, we can do it, you know?
I know, we talked about, I know you stored a few things in there this winter.
Yeah.
So.
I put my.
About doors on there. I don't know if that's it.
In the summertime, I put my sander and snowplow up in there too, because it.
It's a nice storage building, yeah.
It it really is. Yes. I'm looking for some direction. Do we wanna get somebody to seed or prepare and seed the drain field? It's done?
Not done, but it's, we did that.
Okay, alright, alright. And not that it's my business or anything, but do we wanna get a plumber and stuff for the storage shed out here where the new jail site is?
Right, yeah.
Um, and what we want for sure with maybe a little drawing of what we want and where we want it.
Need to get a conduit in there to get the water line in after.
Say that again?
We need to put like a three-inch conduit down underneath the footing for the water line to come in.
Can it, is it there a hole in the wall for that?
That's for the drain.
And we can't run both of them through there?
I think it's deep now.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't know how deep they put that, but yeah, I don't know if we're gonna go down, you know? Do we know where we're gonna tie, where we're gonna go with that drain? Is that gonna be just a pit in there?
I that's what you guys. I I.
No, you can't. It's gotta be a pit.
Yeah, if you wanna run it in the sewer, it has to be a pit, yes.
But you can't run it in.
You can't run it in the sewer, correct?
You can if you put a pit, because we do over here the bin rows, but I had to put a bit in there. So it catches everything before it gets to the drain. I we can double check that, but I'm, I know.
I would ju- double check and see.
Double check with that.
What the requirements are.
I I was told that that building's pretty much finished except for the doors.
I would say you're right.
And as soon as, I mean, it's probably still some frost inside that building, I would say, yeah. And then we can get the floor finished. It looks nice in there. I stopped and looked at it.
They did a good job, Bill.
Yeah.
Really did. Another thing I did is secondary roads took a couple loads of gravel down there when it thawed out. And I went down with the skid loader and leveled it out so they could get up in there. I also did, I forgot to write that down.
Yeah, they could get in, there was, where they could get, we had gravel up by the door, but.
Right.
Right, so, um. Also, when I stopped, and I think there was a nitrogen truck, it didn't say anything on the side of it, but. So I don't know if he's starting to look at it too, or just so we keep him on track.
Yeah.
If you wanna touch base with Craig or?
Yep, yep. The gutters on, I think, like I said, I think the building, other than the walk door and the garage door, I think it's, it looks finished.
Yeah, they have it.
Yeah.
And if somebody wants to give some direction on where you want the 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 plumbing and what kind of drain you want, then I will get the plumber that we usually get to look at it so we can get going on that. So when they're ready to pour the concrete, they can.
Well, yeah, I don't know, Brett, you wanna help do that or?
I was just gonna say, Brandon, has that something you wanna go down and look and see where you want the bathroom and the water put in?
I think it's pretty common.
Is that whole building gonna be heated, do we? Or just?
It's a possibility, I think.
Okay. Because the plumber said that would have something to do with the everything in the building.
Well, I think we want separate from the office area type, we're not gonna keep the building at. We're in the office sometimes, I suppose you want fifty-five, seventy degrees, but that building does not need to be out to me, right?
Yeah, I think we discussed when Trey was down there that we put the, makes the most sense, I think, put the bathroom in the southeast corner of it.
Yeah, and I think that's where the knockout is too, correct?
I think so.
In the wall you're talking?
Yeah.
Somewhere in on the south wall. I'm not for sure, but I.
Know that, where that's at, or we have to get a whole?
I think there's, it looks like to me there might be a pencil mark.
Yeah.
Line on the wall. Yep.
Yep.
But yeah, I get that stuff going, because then guys, you know, someday they're gonna go, well, let's do the floor, and that way we're ready for it.
Yeah, I would just get together with Brent, Dr. Brent, see where.
And I'll check with this, uh, the water department to see about the drain, right?
That'll be good, yeah.
Anything else?
Yep. Have, have you talked to Jared about what they're doing up there for lighting and such?
No.
Are they doing some new lighting and stuff, and did, are they, are you aware of that?
No.
I think we've paid some bills.
Okay. Maybe touch base with him too. I don't know what they're doing, if you've got any suggestions for that.
Okay.
Everybody know their fixtures, weren't they?
Right. See, and what I don't know right or wrong, I just, I just buy the bulb that's an LED, and then I make the old fixture work. Cost me fourteen bucks instead of underneath.
Well, maybe have a conversation with him.
Alright.
And then we'll, I mean, they need to do some updates, but still, if there's money to be saved for it, and you could give them some advice, that would be.
I will do that.
Matt is gone. Did you know that?
Matt.
Hiding.
Yeah, I did realize that. After I texted, he said he no longer worked there.
Yeah, I didn't know that either.
Yeah, I think they're, everybody took over a little bit, everybody's work, from what I heard.
He's working for OSHA now. And we had a meeting yesterday, we started downstairs. How's the table, Carl?
What table?
The conference table.
How is that coming, Lisa? I was supposed to touch base with her, I haven't got there.
No, you were supposed to, again.
No, I thought we, did we, wasn't we gonna have some conversation on that or not? Am I wrong?
I think we will have conversations.
Okay. And one other thing I wanna mention is the elevator is up and running. For 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 forty-eight hundred dollars, we got three pieces of angle iron on the elevator. That's what that consists of. Took him like twenty minutes to put install. All of what that does is when the, if you're in the bottom of the elevator and the elevator goes over ten inches, you can't open the door. Once it goes up, then you can open the door, but or, yeah, you can open the door. Then once it comes down ten inches, you can't open the door. Apparently, people were stopping in between the floors or something and opening the doors and going in between the floors on the bigger buildings. That's why we're putting that in there. And the reason.
Have any in between.
Well, we don't, but you know, it's one does all. The reason it took so long, the gentleman told me, is they couldn't get the parts. It couldn't get the angle iron.
So. Then why do we get rode up on it if it's not our fault or out of our realm?
Why do they come in and shut it down?
Well, they they sent us a notice, and I called the company to put it on. He says, we'll be right there, get it in, don't worry about it. So I didn't, but then they couldn't get some part of the that they needed, so it took longer, and then they they give us a ten-day notice to get it fixed. And could get, it was supposed to be here, but it wasn't. It didn't because they couldn't get some part of it. What I didn't think was quite right is the guy comes in, jimmies the door, doesn't tell anybody he's doing it. Just jimmies the door, gets in and shuts it off. Never told anybody.
You can see the door, the door is jimmyed.
Yeah.
Really?
So he does it all the time.
Is this the inspection guy, or is he for the state?
Works for the state.
What's his name?
I called the state about seven times and told him that when this guy's coming here, he needs to call, because every time we, he calls us, we're somewhere else, and then we got right clear back to letting him in. And he won't, he refuses to do it.
The day that he locked us out, I'm sorry, it was definitely during office hours, and he could have come down to the office.
Could have come anywhere, could have called me. He's asked my phone number.
Yeah.
So is that protocol on his part to do that without telling him?
I don't know. I.
Well, we need to know. I mean, we need to get, I need to, I'll call the state or somebody. I wanna.
I can call them if I know.
If our door is damaged, I want something done with it.
Well, I think we have to put a note on the door or a sign on the door, do not, you know, enter without.
Do not enter.
Well, you know, I mean, to the elevator, I mean.
A sign is good as if somebody's standing there watching, so it's just like a speed limit sign, though. If you don't abide by it.
Well, don't you think he would be in a state, you know? I know.
Apparently, he doesn't care.
He's supposed to do that, so that sign is just the way.
Yeah, I have, I don't, you tell me what you want, that's what I'll do.
Know for fixing the door.
Here's what I want, and don't forget, I wanna know if you get any satisfaction out of the state, otherwise I wanna know who you talk to.
Okay. Alright.
Who's in charge of that in the state? A certain office?
There is.
Oh, yeah. Department of Labor, isn't it?
Inspection technician.
Yeah, I'll find out. I'll get it. Alright.
And then I've lost track of where we are with our parking lot. I completely lost track of our fees.
As far as getting this member?
Yeah.
I put a, I put money in the budget, didn't add, but I don't know if he'll pay. Yeah, but it'll start after.
I thought we had it in for this year already.
No.
It's part of the ninety thousand, what I remember, is the tuck pointing here at the courthouse and the stonework.
For after July first, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can look at getting, we talked to, you talked to Mike and David about it, and you're okay with what we're gonna do, is that correct?
No, I have not talked, I talked to Mike about it, but he hasn't got there to look at it yet.
Okay, so let's move forward.
I will touch base with Dave, make sure it's okay with Dave, and then we'll go from there.
Go out for bids.
Yeah.
I have just one last question. Um, I did talk to the insurance agent yesterday, and they have noticed that the building is near completion. Um, I did talk to the insurance agent yesterday, and they have noticed that the building is near completion. And what do you believe the cost of that building will be that we should insure it for?
What do we pay for it?
The ninety-six thousand was the bid from river construction for the building itself, but what about the concrete? I need to get it insured.
I, I, I would say you're gonna put.
I don't think. Floor is another six dollars a square foot, the floor.
Yeah, but you, you're not, I don't think there's gonna be much difference, I'm gonna say pay two hundred thousand to two fifty, you could see what the difference is it costs.
So you think the building is worth two hundred? That's what I'm telling.
And foundation was.
Or replacement, whatever.
About eleven thousand, I think. And then the dirt works another.
Another six months is gonna be worth.
I just need, I wanna get it insured, so.
I would say if there's a difference, or the replacement costs, if there's a difference between two hundred and two fifty, I would pay less than two hundred.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no less than two hundred.
Actually, I would push it to two fifty because the cost is.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You mean, ain't gonna come back down?
Thank you, Marty.
Okay, and again, I wanna thank you for the long one, it's very nice. Yes. No, doesn't, we're only in it a couple hours, and I think we can.
Well, my thought is you might have spent all summer in a bad air conditioner, so.
Why you say stuff like that?
You'll be driving it.
I took it down, I got a sign, you know. And I took, drove down there so you could put Jackson County on it, so they know who I am. Actually, it's simply beautiful, Jackson County. Thanks, guys.
And you're in it?
At this time, we will open the public hearing for the Jackson County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three budget.
Yes, and shall we come up, please?
Morning, I guess my first question.
Today is a good day, go ahead.
My first question will be, has the auditor's office or Shelley or either of my colleagues had any calls about the proposed budget?
I have not.
No.
I have not either.
Few brief conversations, but, no, no. Major concerns or complaints?
No, I, I can't say that we had any, any questions, comments, or complaints. You know, this has been, obviously, it's been a long process, and today is the, the ending of this process to get the, yeah. To get the budget adopted and such, so.
As we said, you know, and it's still a public hearing, but we quote a different time, you know, it's been a trying year with. Inflation and, and the cost of materials and.
As you just heard, you know, Mike Closey talk about, you know, the quotes that. Absolutely.
It's hard to absorb.
Well, we don't know what's ahead of us, that's really the, the problem, is we know where we're at right now, and we know where we've been, but where are we going?
I guess I would say that I think the general public knows that we've been consistently very conscientious about how we budget. And um, don't put a lot of frills in it. But apparently, we're doing the job they want us to do. Or we certainly would have people here. We did raise the levy a, a little, but then, of course, we removed mental health. And we added the, the, we continue with the bond for the jail.
And we're, as you said, conscientiously using dollars. Um, we're using ARPA money for helping to build the, the new jails.
And we're doing other productive things with. To save the taxpayers.
Absolutely. Yep, trying to keep the levy as low as possible. If they gave us a dollar, I don't wanna give a dollar back. You talked about the, we did increase the levy rate, overall, we increased it point zero nine 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 six, so not quite. Ten cents. Overall, per, per thousand dollars of valuation. And I just have to say that from the publication that I did in the newspaper. Somewhere, somehow, I put eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, I think. In general fund for mental health for the current year, when I was reestimating monies. That shouldn't be, not for this year, it's al- it was already in for next year, but some, so it's duplication. So I took that out, so there's a difference from what we're adapting to what was public.
Do we have to republish them or? So, yeah, I mean, I guess I know it was in the paper, and I read the article, and there was a quote in there for me that. I was trying to explain how the rollback worked, and somebody said, I, I must have said fifty percent rollback, but. That's not quite the case sometimes, and residents are really residents, more probably closer to forty, so.
Which is all determined by the state.
Understand the rollback process on that.
We wish we had a choice.
Assessing two hundred thousand, you're not gonna get twenty times the, the rate, it's gonna be maybe thirteen, twelve, thirty.
If you really think about a lot of this, you don't have much say so. They cap you on the general fund, you know, you're capped here, you're capped there, they tell us what we're going to get. I mean, there's some pending legislation and some current legislation that's going to affect our pocketbooks, that we have some question marks. And visiting with Beth Gerlach, the county treasurer, so there's some things that are happening that could be a significant impact to county cities and schools. I think it's all a, a stay tuned.
And that's an every year deal.
Unfunded mandates.
Well, and they do it after we've got our budget set.
Do it before March fifteenth.
Well, last year, and, and the year before is, was a prime example.
Yeah, absolutely.
And now this year, they've taken it away, consolidated it amongst the regions.
So is there anything else on this that you'd like to go over?
That I can recall off the top of my head, um, that we haven't talked about already.
Questions from the public that are listening in?
If not, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
With a motion and a second. All those in favor? I, I guess, um, Lisa, on behalf of the board, I wanna thank your office. And the elected officials that work with us, and I know not everybody's one hundred percent happy with the end result. But um, it was a compromise, and we came up with what we felt were the dollars that we needed. So that we're not cutting any services, but we're continuing to provide services as usual.
Uh, I just would like to say thank you on behalf of the auditor's office to the board. I would agree with you, this has been a very difficult budget to put together this year with everything that we have going on, I think that. Um, as far as the auditor's office, we still need to do payrolls, we still need to do real estate transfers, we still need to pay claims. You know, work still needs to be done, and then we spend a significant amount of time on the budget. I think that people need to also understand that really, we have other projects that are going on also that need to be paid for. And I think when you look at the law enforcement center, um, last week, we came to that culmination where we did close the. The uh, loan on the law enforcement center, we have received the money, which is a good news. We got some very good emails that came to us that they thanked us for our time and our patience. And so that was kinda some good emails that, that we received. But um, and I'll be discussing that a little bit further in my agenda, when it comes to that money. So, again, thank you, and, and I appreciate that, that you appreciate our efforts. So, with that being said, with the closing of the public hearing then. I also have included in your packet today that there was a recommendation from the compensation board. Um, as far as I gave you both meeting minutes. So today, I would need a motion to accept and place on file the compensation board's recommended election officials' compensation schedule. For fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So all you're approving is their.
Accepting their reports.
Accepting their, their minutes or their report.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve, all those in favor?
With that being, with that being said, I'm sorry, Jack, with that being said, then, I need a motion to approve resolution number eight seventy-seven dash zero three dash twenty-two. Dash twenty twenty-two, certifying the board of supervisors approved salary adjustments for all elected officials for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and that does show a sixty percent reduction. Eight seventy-seven, I'm sorry, eight seventy-seven, that's just approving, yes, that's just approving, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution eight seven seven oh three two two dash twenty twenty-two.
I got a question. I know you're running through part of your program here, this is done before, we did, which actually. Approved the budget, so this is.
So we're coming to that, right, so this is, we had to do this in order, so we had to get the compensation board in, you had to accept it. Now I'm asking for a motion to approve.
Yeah, we did, on the last one. On the, on the proving that resolution.
All we did was approve the, the things that were in here from the compensation board. Now we're dealing with the resolution certifying this supervisor's salary adjustment.
So I, so we voted on the resolution number eight seventy-seven, my next motion then is to approve resolution number eight seventy-eight. Dash zero three dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, adopting the proposed Jackson County budget as published. For fiscal years starting July first, twenty twenty-two, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Including the reduced compensation board salary recommendation by sixty percent.
Motion to approve.
I would second, I, I would like to make a recommendation to the comp board to. Recommend what they really would like. Instead of putting it in a paper to say, well, they're just gonna do this, assuming that we're gonna do something with that recommendation.
I, I agree. I think that they shouldn't assume anything, nor should we. And when they came uh, with their recommendations, saying that, well, they'll just cut them in half anyway. That's not the right attitude, and that's not their job. And they were giving, given a lot of information about other like offices in other counties, and seemed to ignore that. And I don't know what's gonna happen in the state legislature, they're still discussing comp boards. And haven't made any final decisions yet, but it needs to be, something needs to happen.
Well, it's a tough go when the law says you have to cut each position by the same percentage, that's it. You know, but, when if you're in business and you evaluate employees, you, you evaluate them on their production or their. Attitude, or, you know, their relationship with the public, or whatever it may be. But not each person should be the same, that's just. And I always felt as a, as an owner or a boss that I could talk to my employees and have a conversation and, and compensate. As required.
You know, it's important to reward them for, for what they do. And just making it a blanket doesn't reward those that are doing above and beyond. And I guess I'm also gonna put, this is the last, I mean, last time I'm gonna be here for this type of thing. I really, um, it upsets me that the compensation board takes such little interest in what our job is. In fact, we're the ones that set the eighteen million dollars, we're the ones that go over every light item. And it's not, as I said, Saturday night, it's, it's not a nine to twelve-thirty or eleven-thirty meeting on Tuesday. We all commit a lot of time to this job, and I know we. And I won't say, we knew what we expected when we were elected, because you have no idea. And that's why I pointed out to some of the candidates the other night that, um, I hope you realize it's not just. Two and a half hours on Tuesday morning, we all have many other commitments that take a lot of time. And as, as, as Lisa, or Luan reads over the schedule for the week. Um, there's a lot of other things that go on, plus you have travel time and everything else, so, you know, it is, it's, it's. I don't know why we always. Five and a half percent, and I told, I guess I, I think I said to Larry when we were discussing it, I said. Um, we can take ours to zero because it's pennies what we're getting. And I, I don't think the compensation board really. Is very committed to the board of supervisors, and haven't been in the past. So with that, all those in favor of the motion that's been presented?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carry.
So to finalize the fiscal year twenty-three budget. I need a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the adoption of budget and certification of taxes. For fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And direct auditor Smith to file all required forms with the Iowa Department of Management as required by law.
Throw boot. Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, motion carry.
That concludes all the paperwork. For our twenty twenty-three budget. We'll sign the paperwork and, and get it sent in. I'm sorry that this, I'm sorry, I can't say that, I'm sorry that this isn't done. I'm kinda glad.
I think we're all happy.
I think I just wanted to see the period at the end of the sentence. Yeah, a lot of discussion and a lot of decisions.
And Shelley, you and Lisa are Godsend, yes, to this board.
Um, you know what, we left last night about what, six? I don't know, what, I don't even know when it was, six something last night, so. All right, that's, okay, that's, yeah, yeah. We do, we get to spend a lot of time together.
I did have somebody bring that up, it was just, how can you just change that by a percentage? And they brought up the comp, or all the other stuff that goes with your paycheck, insurance and all that stuff, I says, no. Figure out that, and you know, every time we move it a little bit, all that needs to be changed again, it's not just a simple. Well, let's see what this does, so.
If it were just one line item, it would be easy, but it's many.
Thank you, Shelley.
I think we're ready for the. The public hearing, I think, is scheduled for ten.
Okay, do you wanna, is there anything else you can do?
I can. Um, so let's also, I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the February ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Veterans Affairs minutes, all those in favor?
I also need a motion to approve the renewal of a class B beer, beer permit without door service and Sunday sales. There's a Winkle Recreation Association at twenty-eight, four sixty-one, one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue is Winkle. Effective May first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion and a second to approve the license, all those in favor? Aye, motion carry.
This is something that last week, um. In visiting with Beth, we talked about specifically our loan closing and the money being deposited. It was wired into our account at McCopey State Bank. We, every year, we have a, a depository's resolution where X amount of dollars can be deposited into the banks. And we're not in a money-making business, but we have received funds. From the federal government, and will receive other funds from the government, that it is, we're actually over our limit at McCopey State Bank. The depository. Uh, resolution that we did at the end of last fiscal year, June thirtieth, said that we can have twelve million dollars at McCopey State Bank. With receiving the loan proceeds of almost six million, we're now at eighteen million. And we also. So we've only, we have been over a week. No, so that, it just happened, we closed on Wednesday, so this just happened. And looking ahead, we also will receive our second payment for our ARPA funds, and maybe potentially some other federal. and maybe potentially some other federal funds that, uh, hopefully will be coming into our coffers, plus we're also now receiving taxes and such. So I really, uh, we need to increase that resolution to, um, allow Beth to be legal in our eyes, I guess, so to speak. So today I would also like to, uh, have a motion to approve resolution number eight eighty dash zero three dash twenty two dash twenty twenty two to amend the Jackson County Bank depositories for fiscal year twenty one slash twenty two, which is the financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the county treasurer's office. And I think we talked about changing that to twenty five?
Twenty five.
Twenty five million, we conferred with treasurer, uh, Beth, and we believe that twenty five million should be more than adequate, and I know that we're gonna start spending money, but we need to at least um, pass this resolution for the temporary time being.
And when I was in the office yesterday, Beth and, and Lisa and Shelley, I was in on part of that conversation, so, yeah.
So does, I guess my question would be, and I don't have a problem with that, that's certainly one to be on the legal side of things.
Yeah.
Um, does that have anything to do with our FDIC?
I asked that question before and I think that it's handled differently, I'm no banker, but I, I had asked that question before. And I think that it's.
Because we went through this yesterday with the weight disorder, that they were over on the attributable amount and so the, um, the I guess what we call are the winner of the bond had to supply a form to say that they had the funds or they, 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 they had the, uh, incurred funds or the funds available to ensure themselves, so. But they actually had to go through a process to do that, and so that's why I asked. You know, what's two hundred fifty thousand insurable per?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know, I can't answer that, I guess.
Yeah, I guess, this maybe have that ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're just raising it from one bank and that? Really haven't?
That's for a depository, the treasurer chooses her own.
Oh, okay.
So yes, that's all we're asking us to raise, McCope of the State Bank.
Okay.
And we've been very um, we've had a lot of conversations about this money, cause I don't, I want, any interest that we receive on this money, I wanna make sure that it gets deposited back to this account. So any fees or whatever, I mean, we've, we've really been very diligent about making sure that that anything that is received and whatever goes out is well accounted for.
Well, it's not like this money isn't allocated.
No.
So I mean, we're allocated, but the thing is, we have to be legal in the meantime, so.
Yeah.
Um, and we have to make sure, God forbid something happens, you know, what, who knows what might crash.
Exactly.
So we, they, somebody has to have the collateral back, that. You know, there, we gotta be insured for it, or we gotta have something saying that we're, we're back for that kind of money.
I don't know if you wanna call Beth and have her discuss this or not, I really, like I said, I.
Uh, we could pass it on the contingency that she reviews it with the bank.
Yeah.
So is there, I mean, it used to be, you could only have so many funds in each bank that wasn't insured.
But there's no way that we can only have two hundred fifty thousand dollars in a bank, I mean.
Not our.
When we're, when we're taking in so much tax money for everybody, you know, we're probably taking in thirty five, forty million dollars in tax money, plus all of the other road use tax and sales tax and all, you know, I mean.
On any given day, that could change a lot.
That's right.
And so.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, on your operating account, though, I don't think there's a limit on that, except, except for something like this, you know. And I don't know when this was set, that, that could have been set twenty years ago, I don't know.
Do you wanna have Beth come over?
Um, it might be okay for, just, we got a couple minutes, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, you know, like I said, we're gonna get the other half of our ARPA money, so that's gonna come into the account. Um, or I should say, it's coming to the bank, there's different accounts that are within the bank.
I do, that's me, and, um, Jeff and I were over to the bank.
We, we're about to do that. To make sure that we have all of the, the signers, as she's the main signer, I'm a co-signer, and we made sure that all of that was correct also. So we're making sure that we've got everything lined up correctly. Hey, and you know, while I'm see here, and just before she gets here, um, okay.
We just had a question.
Just have a seat.
Um, I know, we're, we're raising the, um, or the resolution that was presented as for the depository, uh, to raise the limit on that. So my question is, as far as the FDIC insured or collateral covering, covering what we have in there at any given time in this case?
I don't know how FDIC works for government funds. I only know how it works for individually owned funds.
So I guess.
Yeah, we're just curious, is, you know, are we covered if the bank crashes?
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that, I can ask them.
So I guess, my thoughts were, was to, to pass this resolution with you.
Well, so what I did, cause we have, it's like the perfect storm, we have tax collection coming in to that account this month. And we also already have the, um, ARPA funds that we received in there.
And the bond.
And then the bond came in, and the bond put us over the limit of twelve million.
Yeah, Lisa explained that, but our, like I said, but it's like that money's already allocated, we have it allocated for something, it's just that when it comes and goes, that we're covered if.
I guess we're just kind of wanting to check with the bank to see.
Insured, I, I will ask them today. Yeah, I know, you know, personally, you get up to a certain amount on your own funds.
Two fifty or something.
And if it's a joint, you get, you know, double that, but it's, yeah, probably different for government funds, I'll ask them to.
So if you can check with that, let us know.
Yeah, I can do that. But yeah, that's the whole, I did move, um, money out of that account to IP for now, just because I didn't want us to be over our resolution sitting there for four days that way. So we're okay for now, but I will move it back to the high quarter of a percent interest inside of the point zero one that we're getting in IP, so.
We could have been for the last CD for point zero six.
But I can't put it in a CD, cause you're gonna use it. Yeah.
Not a issue.
Okay, so we could pass a contingent on the information that she's able to bring back to us.
I can go call him right now and just ask the question, then you'd have your answer.
Okay.
I'm gonna do that?
Sure.
Okay. I'll do that.
So, we didn't make a motion yet, we just tabled.
No, we'll table that till she gets back, so is there anything else you can?
I also need a motion, um, to approve setting a public hearing date of April twelfth twenty twenty two at ten AM for a FY twenty twenty three budget amendment.
And the budget amendment is for?
Shelley could discuss this with you.
Sure. Um, I gave you three sheets that look like, or Lisa gave you three sheets that look like this. On the second page, that looks like this. Is, is that and the next page are the list of amendments that I'm making on the expense side. So a large part of it is, um, ARPA funds for the jail building. Two hundred fifty two thousand of it is for secondary roads. Also, I upped the amount by four hundred and twenty thousand to for the mental health to disperse the remaining funds to the region. Hopefully it's not that much, but that covers us so that we don't have to necessarily make a, hopefully make another amendment. I re, um, adjusted the insurance, county insurance, on the second page of the expenses, at the bottom of the page is a list of, by the jet, by the fund, the change in the fund. So you can see general supplemental, oh, two thou, fund oh two thousand change, we're reducing that by sixty one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, that's for the insurance. Then you can see on that second page, a large portion of, um, the, well, jail construction fund change, one million, six hundred and seventy nine thousand and sixty three dollars. Uh, whether we, that's content, that's just in case we spend all that, I don't think that we would be able to have that many, much of invoices received in this fiscal year.
They can't get the stuff.
Well, yeah, exactly. Um, so that's what that's for, hopefully that's the only amendment we would have to make for that. I adjusted operating transfers in and out to, and then part of that was to reimburse the general fund from the bond proceeds that we got. Increased the amount of ARPA money that were, but that were budgeted for um, a large portion of that is for the jail construction. We had money budgeted, amended for previously in the general fund for the metal shed out of the law enforcement center, and I reduced that in the mental, in the general fund and moved that expense to the capital, the courthouse capital projects fund, which is thirty three zeros or one. So. And then on the last page, there, um, secondary roads increased local option sales tax by two hundred fifty thousand. Um, I put in the money that we received for the ARPA money. Um, I increased the revolving loan fund money, but that was budgeted for forty one thousand, fifty nine dollars. A conservation grant of monies, I'm assuming that's from friends, money that we're getting reimbursed from friends, but so on, geothermal reimbursement. Um, the bond proceeds of five million, eight hundred and ninety thousand. And then the operating transfer adjustments that I made, so.
Okay.
Motion just.
I'll second.
That's to set the public hearing.
That sets public hearing for the twelfth, yeah.
Yes. Just to be clear.
Good motion in a second to approve setting the public hearing on the budget amendment, um, for April twelfth, twenty twenty two at ten AM. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carry. Okay.
For you all. So public funds are pledged by, um, they pledge their bank assets to cover all public funds that they have. So they have to cover everything that we have there as public funds with their own assets daily. So they check the daily public funds balance and they make sure they have enough pledged investments to cover every penny of that. So they would get paid first if there would be, um, anything that happened to the bank. Okay.
Public funds would.
Mm-hmm.
So are we the only public funded group?
I don't know, if they have, and if the city has money, they would be public funds and but they, they say they're a public fund.
Makes me feel better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not FDIC. Alrighty, you're welcome.
So with that, um, I need a motion to approve resolution number eight eighty dash zero three dash twenty two dash twenty twenty two to amend the Jackson County Bank depositories for fiscal year twenty one twenty two, the financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the county treasurer's office.
So moved.
Second. Put a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carry.
You need an amount in there, or is that?
I did not, I mean, what we're, what, what we had talked about is up to twenty five million from McCope of the State Bank, and I can, I can include that if you would.
Or at least in the minutes.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, it's ten o'clock.
Okay, so now we open the public hearing for the amendment to the Jackson County Supervisor redistricting?
No.
Oh, no, yeah, no, no. Four H, four H, yeah. We're on G now.
Yeah.
Open the public in, for the adoption of plan specifications, forms of contract and estimates of the cost of construction of the Jackson County Fair and ISU extension for H outreach center.
Which as we've noted in previous meetings, this is a county building, so therefore this is just another step in the process to dot our i's and cross our t's. This is just kind of being transparent of what we're doing down there or what they are doing, but because we're involved. So.
And I have not heard that.
We had our meeting last night. And, um, they had to act on the bills that we acted on a couple weeks ago, and, um, they have the, the bids are, the, the information is out, since, when Thursday of this week, we'll get, have the opening of the bids. And then next week, they'll approve or will approve with their recommendation.
April fifth.
Huh?
April fifth. I think we grew on April fifth, award on April fifth.
Okay. So we open up, they, we'll, we'll open up the biz Thursday, but there sounds like construction will not start until spring of twenty three um, for groundwork and then maybe later, because there, I mean, Scott said that they based, John basically says it's gonna be a long time before we get material. So.
Wow.
Perfect storm.
Huh?
It's the perfect storm.
And you know, when it looked to me, and the information that was supplied, it looked to me like they had a significant amount of bidders, but there was people interested in the project. Um, I thought that was interesting. We're hoping, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they said there were very few at the pre-construction meeting they had.
Oh.
Dean was real disappointed with the number of people that were there, but then John shared the list of people that had requested information. And that was, made him a little happier.
Yeah. Yeah, we were in Des Moines, otherwise I would have gone.
Okay, so.
The motion is supposed to public hearing.
I would second. A motion in a second to approve this public hearing, all those in favors? Aye.
So with that, then I need a motion to approve resolution number eight seventy nine dash zero three dash twenty two dash twenty twenty two adoption, adopting of the plan specifications, form of contract and estimate the cost of construction for the Jackson County Fair and ISU extension hyphen the four H outreach center.
I'm moved. Second.
The motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, now we move to J, which is open the public hearing on proposed ordinance number three oh one to amend the Jackson County Supervisor redistricting as required by Iowa's Secretary of State in crease, to increase fourteen voters in district one and reduce fourteen voters in district two.
So I gave you, I think I gave you a copy of the letter that I received from Heidi Burhans from the Secretary of State. They felt that by dividing the city of Spragueville, it was unnecessarily divided. You know?
Per section line.
Uh, that's how it was originally divided, was the section line, they didn't like that, I thought it was clean, this is what the district, the redistricting committee decided, but so anyway, what they've done is made the entire city of Spragueville in Supervisor District One instead of dividing it. So, um, we were requested.
County votes anyway, so.
Correct.
It's like.
It's only a residency requirement for filing purposes.
We already published this and, and did this already, correct?
Yep, we did at the end of December.
So, cause legislators at their meeting were asking about it, cause they were gonna check into why they would make this. I said, just let us sleep in dog like now, it just costs us extra money or whatever.
Well, you know, I, I'm a little torn by this.
Send the bill, we should send the bill to the state.
Well, the thing is, is that when, when I received this, this letter from the Secretary of State's office with the approval contingent on us making these changes, um, you know, that was the question right away, we passed it by ordinance, do I need to republish, do I need to do this, do I need to do that, I was wanting to make sure that I was shutting my eyes and crossing my t, and I got no direction. So I did talk to County Attorney Sarah Davenport, and I said, you know, what should I do, and so it was decided then, because this is an ordinance, that we would republish. We would, you know, do everything just like we did at the end of December, hold our public hearing and said, so again, we're doing all of this, as you said, for fourteen people. I just don't see where. Not like we're making major changes here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm doing and, and, and it looks like in years past when things were done, I don't believe that. We had the second public hearing like we're having today. I just wanted to make sure that we did this correctly. And all of this information goes back to the Secretary of State's office. My only decision that I really have to make is do I overnight it?
Have it posted to.
Yeah, so it costs me thirty dollars to overnight all of the stuff to our bond council, so I don't know if I want to spend thirty dollars to.
My snail mail may not figure out.
You know what, I, I kind of.
For ballots to go that way, it's good enough for this.
You know what, we're having people file nomination papers now, you know, so I'm okay with regular mail. It gets there when it gets there.
I would do that.
Yeah.
If there's no further comments, I would make a motion to close the public area.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor? I motion carry.
And if there's.
So then my next thing is. The question is, what do you want to do with your second and third public hearings?
We want to waive them.
Okay.
Motion to that effect. His motion is second to waive the second and third public hearings on ordinance three oh one, all those in favor? I motion carry.
And with the opening and the closing of the public hearing and waiving the second and third public hearings. I would also need a motion to approve, adopt and authorize chair signature and forward all paperwork to the Iowa Secretary of State. On ordinance number three oh one with chair signature on the county redistricting worksheet.
So moved.
For the motion in a second, all those in favor? I motion carry.
Golly, did we get through all of?
I don't know, we're down to P, you almost run out of alphabet.
Yeah, I was going to say, isn't that very often that I? Okay, let's make sure that I have everything. I think we, I think that's all that I have for the morning today.
Going down from A to B. I think everything's covered.
Yeah, I think we've got everything on my agenda covered and for that I'd say thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Bolts is not coming today. She had a management team meeting in Davenport going over some stuff. She is going to come in next week because we did have quite a lengthy meeting yesterday. Discussing the region's budget. And they're going to be trying to host a meeting with everyone, all of the supervisors from all, all five counties. At the first, very first part of May. And to discuss the combination of the funds and. By then we will, should have, we should have a copy of the newly. Put together twenty-eight E and there should be some information which would outline. How we get reimbursed for salaries and health insurance and all of the other things incidentals that. Had been being paid by us, but will now be paid by the region.
I thought that the meeting in Des Moines was very informative.
It was.
Yeah, I learned a few things.
Yeah. And yesterday I, I will just say though, one of the, one of the main issues that mental health has been dealing with lately. And you may have seen some of the emails was with the. Peer support group in Dewitt. The Rod House and the, the board yesterday did approve the three hundred thousand dollar. Allocation to them for the purchase of the old motel. On Highway twenty. Or Highway thirty.
Yeah. On the east side of town, right?
Yes, so he's just, just up from Quick Star and the Genesis Center. See Genesis, they used to be in a house behind Genesis. And Genesis evicted them because they're going to expand and they needed that property to expand on. So this was a place that was up for sale and it, they have to be commercially designated. Um, and so. It's taken a lot of work between. Todd's lawyer, our county lawyer and then our county attorney. And then they have to send that all out to the other four county attorneys to get their input. And so was also decided yesterday that it was unfair for the mental health region. To keep asking the five counties, because you know. Every, every attorney interprets something differently. And so it looks like we're going to go out for bid for a, an attorney for the mental health board. So, but Lynn be, will be able to share some other things with you next week. Those are the two things that were. It was, it was a lawn meeting yesterday. So, but we did get things done.
The Oasis.
You know, I was trying to think, I was like, L something, but yes, you're right, the Oasis, yeah.
The palm tree.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, are we down to other businesses? Yep, we are. I guess just an update on nine-one-one that's been operating. They've been. Put a new page, you'll notice if you ever listen to them, they notice a little different tones in the pages, some of the pages, but ongoing. I haven't heard anything. I don't know if we are, I was heard anything through department or. But it's, uh, it seems to be working good. I mean, we're waiting on our tower system, of course. I did see in the paper this morning that if you supervisors approved one point three million of their ARPA funds to nine-one-one radios. Well, they just spent around eleven million, put towers up a couple of years ago, so. But I wasted authority yesterday. There's a couple of things going on there. Of course, the scale will be shut down April. In my notes in there, but it's been published on the radio and in the newspapers for about a week. We're going to get scale, put new scale put in. They do have a couple of applications, qualified applicants for the retiring. Of one person out there and. They've got a two thousand six semi tractor that's pretty much depleted its service and. Talked about your opportunity to look for one. So they said, if you want one, but if you're going to order one now, you won't get it till December for sure. So that's just shows how things are going. Propagates, but. Otherwise. They, they're sure they're still going to get people to stop during the close date. They have it all over the newspapers and the radio, but. I mean, your big agencies in your big cities and municipalities and local services, they know it, so. And. By some law. And ask to go to Clinton. Meanwhile, private operators can take theirs to do good for whatever they like, but otherwise I think it.
So we had our conservation meeting last Tuesday night. I did ask about that little office, which is not an office, it's a broom.
Just fold the desk out.
Irony boards, I guess. So they thought they could find some space somewhere or you can set up whatever you need. That was all right. Our seventh judicial was Friday. Still, even with reduction, we were at a hundred and twenty-four percent capacity and then with COVID, it went down to a hundred and fourteen percent of what we're supposed to have in. The feds are, it was six hundred and fifty thousand behind on payments and now it's up to eight hundred thousand behind. Which, I mean, you can absorb that into. Still make their payroll and everything. It's coming. They said they had to change their something and they.
It is. That ain't bad. They're only what, thirty-one trillion in debt?
Yeah. So that sounds a little scary. There was some extra money put in, but not enough. We really need to replace the RCF down on Third Street. I mean, it's, it's an old block building and it's been remodeled and remodeled and kind of like our jail almost. Yeah, a little nicer than that. So there's, that's just not even in the five-year plan or anything else.
I guess I got a question about the pier house, Jack. I forgot to ask, but was there something that I read in them emails about owning instead of leasing? No, that was a question, question mark to that. I don't remember. I think one of your members brought up the point.
Somebody, somebody did bring that up, but it was. With all the legal advice and stuff that we got. He could only.
How many rooms will they have? I don't know what it is now.
It'll only be able to house four people.
It's not very big, but it's, I'm sure they're going to.
From, from the office. East. There, I think are four rooms and then there was a, a hair salon and the office. The hair salon is going to be their drop-in center. And the office will be the office. Apparently Genesis is dealing on buying the other part of it and tearing it down for parking. Guess that their, their drop-in center. Where Genesis, they need additional room. I guess they're going to add on and they need additional parking, so.
Oh, I did have a question and I don't know what anybody thinks about this or where we go with it, since our. Mandates and our, and our virus has subsided somewhat. Are we still leaving the timeframe of the courthouse at four or are we going to go back to four thirty?
I was approached with that very same question. When are we going to go back for thirty? I think it's time since they dropped everything.
I mean, everybody's here. Till four thirty anyway, but I mean, the point of doing that was to clean and to disinfect basically, is that correct at that time?
I think that's the way to.
I don't know, you know, what did I?
I said, even if you, if you get off at three thirty, there's not enough time to get here and do anything done.
Well, I think that we'll have. Luanne put that on our agenda for next week so that we can discuss it and.
And maybe you can touch base with department heads.
I can send an email out to all department heads.
I think it's time.
In your conversation with the conservation board, would they allow us to put some kind of a welcome center sign up?
I, until I didn't make any contact as far as realtors or anything about going out there, I just still have a. How do we get in? I'm not, I'm going to say if somebody's got a couple of hours to run down, take a look at it and I kind of expect Marty to run down there with a key here.
I would think that Marty should have a key when we had.
Yeah, he's got a key, but I don't expect him to run down. If, if somebody comes from Clinton and say they want to go inspect it and give me an idea of what it's worth.
Could we have the key, a key at City Hall?
I can see, I don't think we have a key, do we?
Can we like even have one of them?
I do.
Lock boxes.
I do. I use that's up to whoever, I guess, yeah, if we can find a key.
It's all a lot of problems.
I mean, we have.
We still have somebody available, at least everybody know where the key was at, or at least we could know the combination of.
To meet. We have them that they're actually tied to Bluetooth, so. That whoever goes in there is registered what time and what, it's not like you don't know who goes in and they have to, they have to get in either a one-day code or they have a card to get in, so. But nobody can go in unless they notify us, of course. But that's.
I, I, I guess my suggestion is we would get Marty's key and have a key made. And then. I don't know, we had to go see. That's what I just asked you on. Yeah, we have a significant amount of keys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we could put a manual or some type of a lot. I can't expect somebody to just run whenever Marty's available or a key or whatever.
Isn't our first step though to have somebody go in and try to put a, an appraisal or.
That's what we're trying to do with this. Well, that's what I was having to do without, I'm not paying for an appraisal. I'll just ask them if they would go through and give us a market analysis on it and say. Come up with some type of value.
I will talk to Mary, see if we have a key. If not, I'll get a key from Marty and having. Have a key made and then at least we have it available in our office and then we can work together as.
Yeah, and that can have a lock box or something on it.
If we could get a copy of the. Assessment, how many assessment tells how many acres and all the other subsets on it, like you would her normalist on the house. Well, you have your beacon information, I mean, on the size and the size of the lot.
Oh, that's okay, that is on beacon.
Tax, or well, taxes will be on, but. We didn't, they say it was one point two acres.
I mean, but that's all on your beacon.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
I mean, there's other things we would have type of flooring and measurements of rooms, but.
We would have to have a public hearing.
Yeah. But we're, we're the preliminary stage of. See if we can put a value on it and if we're happy with that value, may do we saw that we want, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, because we, there's a process for us to dispose of county property.
Yeah, so. Public hearing to do it too.
So let's, first of all, everybody.
So it's definitely, we want to sell it and that, and that's a lease or anything like that.
I think we want to sell it.
I, I, you know, I guess my thoughts are the headaches that has been for us in the last couple of years here, trying to get through this mode.
I agree.
Snowplow, it's not, I don't, it's too far away from here, for one thing, for have maintenance man to run down there. And unless you've got somebody in Seville that would volunteer to take care of it or pay them. Again, it's just another expense, another maintenance, so.
Especially when it's closed all winter, I mean.
You can certainly see what our options are when we decide what it's.
Yeah.
I mean, it would make a nice home too.
Yeah, somebody could do that.
Well, would it be zone? It could be commercial too, I mean it.
It could still be commercial, make a heck of a.
No, do it now.
Put a quick star.
Kidding, of course.
Make a motion for adjourn.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor? Hi, motion carry.